Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 8th Planning Board meeting. With that, I'd like to stand up, please.
My name is Tony Ngo, Clerk of the Planning Board. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting, and you may participate in person or remotely via computer by going to zoom.us, entering access code 844-3206-8762, or by calling in at 301-715-8592. You can use *6 to mute or unmute your phone line. We ask all speakers to please identify yourselves at the podium or online each time you speak by stating your name, address, and town of residence for the record. We ask participants in person to use the microphone. Please address all comments and questions through the chair. Discussions or comments about town employees or board members shall be avoided so as to not violate individual rights. This is a public meeting and is being broadcast on local access and is being recorded by Millbury Public Access Cable Television, available live on public access channels Charter 191 and Verizon 26. And the Chair reserves the right to limit comments from an individual on any one item to three minutes and request a public refrain from repetitive comments. Thank you.
Okay. First on our docket is a public hearing, Old Common Road definitive subdivision application.
Do you have the public hearing notice?
Say it again.
Public hearing notice. Public hearing. What about it? I don't know if I have that.
Connor? I don't see it here on the tablet either.
I have it here up if you'd like me to read it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
This is the public hearing notice for the definitive subdivision application. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81W of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Millbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 8th, 2025, at the Millbury Town Hall, 127 Elm Street, Millbury, MA, on the application from Old Common Road LLC for a proposed definitive subdivision located at Zero West Main Street, MAP 78 Lot 1, West Main Street, MAP 77 Lot 15, and 242 West Main Street. The application is available for review in the Planning Department via appointment during normal business hours and online at the Planning Board's webpage, millburyma.gov/planingboard. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place specified above. Bruce Devault, Chairman.
Okay. Hi, folks. How you doing? I just wanted to mention that he has a lot of information to go through. I'd like to have him go through it and us review it with him before we take public comment. Okay. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My allergies are with me this evening, so I'm going to try to have a clear voice. So I think we're going to have plans on the screen, and I also have an easel here with the plans. And if I'm in the way and anybody needs me to move, feel free to just nudge me. My name is Michael Dryden. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Allen Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the owner applicant of this property, Old Common Road Developers LLC. And in the audience, it's very tight here this evening, so we do have three individuals from Old Common Road Developers, Brian Bergen, Vincent Corsini, and Paul Cohen. And I'm going to do most of the talking this evening, but if I do need them to answer any questions relative to their history, I will certainly call on them. What I wanted to do is just start with the overall existing conditions at the project site. This property is just over 91 acres in total, and I'm sure everybody in the room is familiar with the property, but I'm going to just give you sort of an orientation. You'll notice north is sort of glancing up the sheet this way. So West Main Street is here. Singletary Road intersection is here. Harris Avenue and Old Common Road across the top of the sheet. As I mentioned, it's three parcels. The two main parcels are owned by Old Common Road Developers LLC. The third parcel is right here. I'll just trace that for you. That's at 242 West Main Street. That's just under an acre of land. My client, the applicant, has that property under agreement with the owners Keith and Mary Ekstrom. That lot currently has 150 feet of frontage, and as I mentioned, just under one acre of land. That lot has significance, which, as we go further into this presentation, will become evident. Surrounding land uses, of course, single-family residential primarily on West Main Street.
Can I interrupt you just for one sec? I'm sorry. Kevin, can you zoom in on what he's doing with his easel over here? Just so everybody can see it.
I'm not sure you're going to pick that up, but...
This is me moving it, but I'll try to keep up.
Okay.
Stop me at any time if you want me to repeat it.
Okay, so he can't zoom in on that while you're on, right?
Yeah, I think the video feed is showing mostly what's on the screen.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with what it looks like right now? Okay. Thank you.
Great. As I mentioned, surrounding land uses primarily single-family residential dwellings along West Main Street. There's a solar farm here off to the west, and then on the opposite side of Old Common Road is the Briarly Pond Conservation Area, and there's a multifamily residential development off the page up in this area, which is why we notified some 200 people for the Conservation Commission meeting that's coming up next week. So, oh, before I move on, I want to just mention the overlay district. There is a... If I could just trace it here, there's an Aqua for Protection District B that is right here that divides, sort of bisects, the property. The west side is within that district, just so everybody is aware of that. It doesn't really have a major impact on the design whatsoever at this point in time. So Old Common Road, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. It is somewhat improved for the first roughly 250 feet. There's utilities in that section of road. There's areas that have been patched. The pavement's been patched over time by various landowners. And then, once you move beyond that part, there's a parking area that provides access to the conservation area. And then, beyond that point, it's roughly a 12-to-14-foot-wide gravel access road. It is a public way, an unimproved public way. And, again, currently, that section, I'm going to point to the approximate area, provides parking. I'm going to guess for maybe six to eight maximum vehicles that could use that conservation area. So with the exception of what I just mentioned in Old Common Road, the improvements, as well as the house at number 242, the rest of the site is entirely wooded and undeveloped. There are wetland resource areas on the site. I think I'm going to turn the page, and we're going to zoom in to this section of the property. Connor, this is Sheet 3?
Yep.
So for orientation, again, same north orientation, West Main Street, Old Common Road. So I started to talk about wetland resource areas. You see these areas on the plan with their flag numbers. This is a wetland area here, a large wetland system. The entire 91 acres was delineated and survey-located, and, as I may have mentioned, we have also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. The hearing will be next week. They will be looking at the wetland resource areas. All of them were flagged by McHugh Environmental, and, as I mentioned, survey-located. Utility services are available within West Main Street, water, sewer, gas, and power, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move into the proposal. I'm going to jump all the way to Sheet 7 here, Connor. This project will be developed in two distinct phases, the first of which entails five residential lots fronting on Old Common Road and a reconfiguration of number 242 Main Street that I pointed out earlier. And those six lots, as well as the improvements to Old Common Road, are the only elements that are subject to this initial definitive filing that we're talking about this evening, included in the package, and I'll get to that in a bit. As required within your regulations, your subdivision regulations, we've provided a sketch plan that shows the future build-out. And, again, I'll get to that shortly. So Old Common Road, approximately 250 feet, as I mentioned, already improved. What we're proposing to do is repave that section and install utilities in that section, as well as to provide a 22-foot travelway beyond where that pavement ends into a temporary cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac meets the design standards in your subdivision rules and regulations in terms of the right-of-way diameter and the pavement diameter of 100 feet. So each of these five lots that you see on Old Common Road has 150 feet of frontage in the required area. Along with the utilities in Old Common Road, I'll show you drainage improvements that we are proposing to mitigate the development of the five lots, as well as the new impervious surface that's proposed for Old Common Road. The sixth lot at 242 Main does contain a house and a driveway now, and I'm going to show you a detail of that in a little bit, but essentially, what's going to happen is the existing dwelling will be razed and reconstructed in the back on this newly configured lot, and this will be the future second access point for the full build-out of the project. So essentially, we have an access point that's created at this cul-de-sac and an access point from West Main Street here. I should mention that improvements to Old Common Road are subject to a settlement agreement between the town of Millbury and the landowners' estates way back to 1982, and we did meet with Connor and staff to talk about that. And essentially, what that agreement stipulated was frontage lots could be created, but certain improvements needed to be made to Old Common Road, and those improvements entail the gravel, I believe it was a 15-foot-wide gravel access road. That was sort of, again, sort of a compromise that was reached as part of that settlement agreement. In this case, we're not talking about just frontage lots with a dead end. As I mentioned, this is going to provide access to the larger development in the future, so we recognize that providing 15 feet of gravel in accordance with that settlement agreement is not going to be sufficient to serve this project. So as I mentioned, we would be providing 22 feet of paved surface as the access. Phase 2 of the project, I think it probably makes sense to show you Phase 2 now, just to put it all into context. Let's go to Sheet 16, Connor. There it is. So again, as required in the subdivision rules and regulations, we're required to show you the full build-out potential for contiguous land. I want to make it clear that this, although thought out, is not fully engineered. This is likely what the future Phase 2 project would look like. As I mentioned, from the first access point that's created at the end of the cul-de-sac at Old Common Road, the second access point off of West Main, this represents the remainder of the development. So I think it's important just to see that in context with the current project. I'm going to jump back. So what you see here at a larger scale, same north orientation, is the Old Common Road improvements. And I just want to talk a little bit about those improvements. What you're seeing here is the first section of it. The next sheet continues to the cul-de-sac that I just showed you. So, as I mentioned, the first 250 feet approximately is paved, sort of a patchwork of pavement. The plan here, although very difficult for the audience to see at this scale, you see a dashed line on either side. That represents where the road would be reconstructed, gutter lines created, and where the pavement would be blended smoothly with the existing improvements, the existing driveways, the existing curb cuts. There's very wide curb cuts there, so we're not proposing curbing there, obviously, because we don't want to impede access to existing properties. We are showing curbing in some areas. The curbing ends on the north side of the road, right here. It's just to the left of that large building. That's where the curbing would end, and then there would be no curbing from that point until you get to the intersection where roundings would be provided. One thing that's interesting to note is the existing improvements, the existing access on Old Common is actually a bit skewed and outside of the right-of-way. So I'll try to trace it here. This rounded area that you see right here, there's actually a landscaped area there. And again, you can see that that landscaped area is sort of in the middle of the right-of-way. So there needs to be a little bit of a reconfiguration at that intersection. It won't interfere with parking or anybody's ability to access their property, but there'll be a slight shift, just so that the improvements that we're proposing fall within the actual Utilities being brought up this road, we're working with Aquarian Water to bring an eight-inch water line. We already did receive a "will serve" letter from them. They do need to make some improvements to one of their wells. That work is going to happen by the end of this year, so essentially, January, roughly January, water will be available. And again, we did receive a "will serve" letter from Aquarian Water, and Connor, I'm not sure I gave you a copy of that, but I will forward a copy of that to you. We did, at the meeting that we had with town staff, we talked extensively about sewer, and we have minimal flow here with five new lots on Old Common Road. We do understand that the town is undergoing some siphon improvements at the Elm Street Although nothing was definitive at our meeting with town staff, it was generally understood that there was likely capacity for this small first phase of the project. And certainly, as we move into the future phase, engineering and design, we're going to have to have some lengthy discussion about upgrades to that siphon. Power and gas are also shown coming up the road. And then, I want to touch on stormwater management a little bit. Currently, for the first roughly 250 feet, there are no drainage improvements whatsoever, so essentially, the paved section drains down to the existing catch basins in West Main Street. As the design currently stands, we're not proposing formal drainage from that point onward. It's getting very congested in here with the utilities and the very narrow pinch-point of the right-of-way. So our proposal is to capture as much of the drainage up gradient in this detention basin, Basin 1, and two small riprap detention basins that will capture, install, and release as much of the runoff from Old Common Road as possible. And then, again, from roughly this point down to West Main Street, we're not proposing to add formal catch basins and drain manholes. I'm going to go to Sheet 14. Again, this just matches up with the plan that you were just looking at. This is the remainder of the roadway. You see the lots here fronting on Old Common, and this is the temporary cul-de-sac. And although difficult to see, this dashed line in here represents the future extension of that roadway, and this cul-de-sac will eventually be removed at Phase 2. We did include a list of waivers. I believe there are seven or eight waivers. I can go through each of those, Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to.
Could we hear the waivers? I'd rather hear the waivers up front than at the end when we were voting on it.
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea, too.
Sure. Sorry, can't see you back there. I'll quickly walk through each of the waivers.
Yes, please.
Okay. The first waiver is, it warrants a little bit of discussion, because you have classifications of roadways in town, and what we're proposing here is 22 feet of pavement, which meets the requirement for an access street. However, as I've mentioned several times, this is going to provide access to a larger development, which would then be classified as a sub-collector street, which requires a greater width of pavement, 26 feet. So it's a little interesting in that we're asking for a waiver for something that's not built. In other words, what you see on these plans doesn't require a waiver, but Phase 2 will, if I made that clear. So the other point that I really want to make about Old Common Road is, at full build-out, Old Common Road really is intended to be secondary access. The primary access would be at West Main Street. So, and I mention that because to provide 26 feet of pavement width for Old Common Road is not even possible, because the pinch points in the right-of-way won't allow that width of a roadway. So we've essentially maximized the width of the roadway at 22 feet, which responds to the narrowest pinch point. The second waiver simply is just for contour interval. One-foot contour intervals are required in your regulation, and there's quite a bit of topographic relief on this site, and one-foot contours would just be busy, so it's really not warranted. Section 5.35c is waiver number three. Location of trees greater than 12 inches is required. We're requesting a waiver from this because the vast majority of this work occurs within the limits of the existing gravel roadway. The curbing material, granite curbing, is required, and we are proposing bituminous Cape Cod berm in the areas that I pointed out earlier. Section 6.13, this is waiver number five. Sidewalk is required on one side of an access street. A waiver is requested because we, again, simply don't have the real estate width at the right-of-way to provide that sidewalk. We do anticipate sidewalks throughout the full build, including from West Main Street, but we simply don't have the right-of-way width at Old Common Road to accommodate that sidewalk. Waiver number six, section 6.52, street trees. Typically, you build a new road under your typical cross-section, and you plant trees in the grass strip or in the shoulder. In this case, we're trying to maintain the character of Old Common Road immediately adjacent to the conservation area, keeping everything very narrow. In some areas, open drainage, so we're not proposing to plant street trees. We're going to maintain all the existing mature trees to the extent that we possibly can. Finally, waiver number seven, section 6.19, streetlights. Again, trying to maintain the character of this, of Old Common Road adjacent to the conservation land. We did not propose streetlights, and there's a comment that we'll get to in a bit regarding that from your town planner. So again, the goal for the last two waivers is to maintain the character of Old Common Road. We don't want to come in and over-clear and create shoulders and grass strips, take mature trees out just to plant new trees. So that's sort of the logic behind those last two waivers. As we move through the design and work through some of the comments from town staff, as well as your peer-review consultant, there may be some other minor waivers that we'll need to request. So with that, I just want to talk quickly about the comments that we've received. We've received comments from Mr. McCormick, town planner. Again, StanTech, Mr. Dave Glenn at StanTech has provided lengthy comments as your peer-reviewer. The Building Commissioner, we've received comments from, the fire chief, and I believe that there's probably some other comments forthcoming from DPW, perhaps Board of Health, I don't know who comments in totality, but we expect some additional comments. We've been working over the past few days to provide written responses to those comments, so we're queued up nicely. As soon as we receive those final comments, we will complete that. I do want to mention that we will complete the comment responses, but we will hold off on issuing revised plans until we meet with the commission next week and get their input. So I would estimate that perhaps by the end of next week, we might be able to issue revised plans and written responses to comments. I have, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I have a few items that I think stand out as I went through all the comments, some sort of anomalies, if you will, that I just want to work through and get some input from the board members. I just have a small list. I'll go as quickly as I can. Let's see. This is Sheet 8.
Connor?
Yep. So it was brought to my attention by the Building Commissioner, as well as Mr. McCormick, that frontage, as defined in your zoning bylaw, can't include easements, and it specifically says access and utility easements. So although hard to see, on lots 1 and 2, there's a drainage easement that spans two of the lots. There's still ample room to provide driveways around that easement and around the basin. But Mr. McCormick brought it to my attention that although the zoning bylaw says you can't, your frontage can't include access and utility easements, which this is a drainage easement, if you then go to the subdivision rules and regulations, they include drainage easements under utility easements. So there's some options here. It was suggested perhaps we need to go to the ZBA to seek a variance. My suggestion to the board is that since it's the subdivision rules and regulations that are sort of combining drainage easements with utility easements, that we have the ability to request a waiver. And I just wanted to sort of walk that through and see if you had any input on that. It's an unusual situation. Anytime you have land that slopes down to a roadway, inevitably, you have to mitigate your stormwater adjacent to the road, as we're doing here, so...
And this is a catch basin, right?
It's a detention basin. It's a very small, open detention basin.
You're going to have ducks in your front yard.
Shall I move on to the next item?
Please.
Okay. It was suggested in the comments that the parking area that I mentioned for the conservation area, since we're going to essentially take that away, it was requested that we provide new parking to offset that. The applicant has absolutely no problem doing that. What we suggest is this area, if you're familiar with this gravel road and where this bike maintenance station is on Old Common Road, there's already a significant gravel area there. In fact, there were three vehicles parked there this evening when I drove up there. So it would seem to me that it makes sense to relocate that parking from here to here, which is actually more central to the trail system as well. So I think it'll better serve the trails versus the one trail that leaves this location. And please chime in and comment any time you like.
Isn't there a brook that we would have to go over?
Yes, but we're not altering, you don't, we wouldn't need to alter the gravel road. So the culvert wouldn't be impacted, the wetland wouldn't be impacted. We just utilize that gravel road. What we've done is we provided a curb cut from this temporary cul-de-sac, and again, this is the existing gravel road.
I was thinking a little further back.
Back this way?
Yeah, at the top of the hill, there's a break in the wall.
Right here?
Yeah.
Certainly, I think, open to suggestions.
A big oak tree down behind it, you can see.
That majestic oak tree? I just saw that this evening.
That's the spot I was thinking of.
Okay. I don't think there would be opposition to that.
Of course, with everybody's permission, of course.
Yeah. I think the only comment I would have about that is you'd probably have to create a trail link, which is easily done.
Yeah. But the other option, that's also an option, too. We'll see what everybody says as far as conservation and everything like that.
Fair enough. Mr. McCormick had a suggestion in his comment letter regarding the temporary cul-de-sac. I'm going to jump back to page 14, if I could.
Do you happen to have that sketch?
Do you happen to have that sketch available? I can walk through it if not.
Yeah, I think I do. One second.
So, while he's finding that sketch, what we're, again, proposing is a temporary bulb, so it serves as a turnaround for emergency vehicles in Phase One. And as I mentioned previously, this dashed line in between represents the paved roadway for Phase Two. So, when Phase Two is built, there's no longer a need for this turnaround. So, we are proposing on this set of drawings, for this to be the edge of the right-of-way permanently. A little unorthodox, but when the cul-de-sac goes away, the right-of-way would just have sort of a bump out associated with it. So, what you see on the screen that Connor just brought up in red, the suggestion was to make that a temporary easement, such that the frontage for Lot Five would be along that curved red line where it goes right through the words "temporary cul-de-sac." To me, I think it's six one, half dozen the other, to be perfectly honest. I think you could make an argument for either one. So, whatever the pleasure of the board is in this situation, um, I think the applicant is perfectly fine with that.
I'm just going to speak up here legally, that's the way to do it. You do it the other way, all bets are off.
That was my initial thought, too. You mean, the way it's proposed or the...
Where that red line is, you better have that easement for the, that that lot has that frontage. Otherwise, that lot, whenever...
The lot has frontage.
...will not have the required frontage.
The lot has frontage if the cul-de-sac bulb is built this way. It does have its frontage.
And then the other thing there for the pavement, if you leave it there, leave an easement for it, that would work. Like you show it.
Right.
Right there. Am I seeing it wrong?
So, I just want to make sure I understand you, Mr. Goslin. The way it's submitted or the way that Connor marked it up in red as an easement? Because right now, it's not...
What's on that board right there? Turnaround, that's it.
No, no, I see, I'm looking at it, but that board has two scenarios. It has what I submitted, and then it has Connor's red markings on it. That's why I'm seeking clarification.
So, you're saying the red markings, right, Rich?
I'm saying you need both red markings. One of them is the curve of the road, which is the edge of the right-of-way, which you need for the legal frontage for the lot in order to be legit, without problems. Then you could pre-create the easement on the lower red line around the pavement, which allows the town to leave the pavement there.
Gotcha. So, that paved area would end up owned, being owned by Lot Five?
Yeah. No, no, all that area would be owned by Lot Five, no matter what.
And... Yeah, so that's essentially the only difference.
Yeah, and through the chair, I think maybe it's also just confirming that the red line that goes through temporary cul-de-sac text would have the adequate frontage.
It would. Yeah. I didn't, when I received that from you, I measured it. So, that red line would provide the frontage. So, either way, it's either an easement or it's contained within the right-of-way. So, it sounds like the pleasure of the board would be to provide an easement.
Well, if you don't want to fight lawyers, you want to do it that way.
Yeah. I don't want to fight anybody.
Oh, I'm just telling you. I know, I know.
So, we're happy to, again, we're happy to do it via easement or a right-of-way bulb. It really doesn't matter. I appreciate your input on that. Um, I'm going to get just into the sort of technical weeds very quickly. Uh, I want to just go to page 13, Connor. I just want to make the board aware of something. This is basin number one. It's a very small detention basin that is within that easement that I described. The purpose of this basin is to capture runoff from a portion of Old Common Road and detain it, as we're required to do under the stormwater management regulations. As part of the stormwater manage, regulations, you're supposed to provide a minimum of a two-foot offset to groundwater from the bottom of the basin to groundwater. And this being a redevelopment in a long, narrow, existing right-of-way, we can't provide that two-foot offset. We can provide about a half a foot of offset. So, there's provisions in the stormwater management regulations that, in cases like this, allow you to comply to the maximum extent practicable. So, I'm going to be responding to your peer review consultant who brought this up accordingly, but I just wanted the board to be aware of that. We literally have no other option to mitigate stormwater, because we don't own property on the opposite side of Old Common Road. So, I just want the board to be aware of that. The Fire Chief provided some comments, and I think it was just missed. Um, the chief was noting that the hydrants were not proposed, and it is difficult to see them, but there are two hydrants proposed on here, and I'll reach out to the Fire Chief and walk through that with him. I mentioned Old Common Road not being primary access. I think that covers it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I know that was a lot of information.
Richie, would you like to start?
I want to start where he left off on page 13, page 18. These little detention ponds, where are they draining?
So, the basin number one, that's the largest one, that's on the south side.
I'm assuming they're going downhill towards...
Yeah, so everything, everything slopes down, again, all this through the chair. Everything slopes down to the roadway, so we capture what we can of Old Common Road. And then it pipes back under the road, and you see the head wall? If you can see that on the plan?
Not really.
There's a pipe exiting, there's a pipe exiting the basin, and there's a head wall on the opposite side of the road.
Okay. And where's the water go from there? Once that pond fills up, where's the water go?
As I just described, it goes under the road via a pipe and leaves...
It gets into that pipe, then it goes where? Right uphill or east or west?
The land continues to drop on the opposite side of Old Common Road.
You're dumping it in the other road.
That's exactly where the design point, it all flows now. So, that's the point that we've modeled in our stormwater report.
Okay.
So, it finds its way down to the wetlands, sort of down there?
Exactly. So, if you can picture what happens under existing conditions, everything goes to that point. So, we place the basin there, we mitigate for the 100-year storm, and in a really large event where water has to leave the basin, that's where it exits, just where it does under existing conditions.
Okay, that was my first question. So, there's no water going down Old Common Road towards Main Street?
Well, so there is. There's a section of Old Common Road that is currently paved. It's about 250 feet.
Mm-hmm.
That will continue to flow, just like it does today.
You're not, okay, let me rephrase that. You're not, are you adding anything else?
No. That's why we've done everything possible to utilize every inch of this site to mitigate stormwater, because we don't want to release water down the roadway.
You know, I'll give you, I'll give you a note of disclosure that, you know, I was contacted by one of the abutists of the site.
Okay.
With his concern about the road width. Um, so I did a little bit of research, which I normally don't get that in-depth in it, but I started looking, and the concern I'm having, first of all, is there's no way we can have that as a main thoroughfare, 20 feet wide with no sidewalk, with no nothing, because all you got is 22 feet of pavement. And I'm not even sure if you got a full 22. It was really close when I calced that out.
It's, no, it's 22.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other thing that I'm struggling with is, um, this road was discontinued, which, now, the reason why I know that is because Rivety Pond Village, the village up and back, when they built that, they wanted to use this road, and I was on the board at the time, and I gave the engineers and the surveyors a really hard time about using this road, because it had 22 feet wide of access. And, bless his souls, they really did a lot of research, and they found out that, I believe it was in 1957, it was discontinued as a, as a public road.
We did the research as well.
Okay.
So, it's not entirely, the back portion that is adjacent to the development that you mentioned is discontinued.
Yeah.
As outlined in the settlement agreement that's in your package, you'll see that for a distance, it's still a public way.
Did they give that distance in there?
Yes, it's in the, I gave you a copy of the entire settlement agreement from 1982.
It did. Did we get it?
I did.
And through the chair, I can, yeah, that was included in their application package, and I just pulled up on the plan, the point where Old Common Road is discontinued is, I believe it's 2,130 feet north from the intersection of West Main Street.
Yeah, that's the spot I was showing you.
Which is several hundred feet beyond the proposed temporary cul-de-sac.
The plan from the other engineer showed it a lot closer to Main Street. So, with his fact that it was discontinued. So, I'm concerned. I guess I'm going to have to do a little more research to find out whether you actually have a, still have an existing right-of-way through there. I don't know how you can allow 22 feet of pavement from property line to property line when our zoning regulation, what's the, what's it, a 40-foot right-of-way for streets or 50? I'm not sure which one it is. And you're telling me you're going to give us 22.
So, if I, if I, if I could, Mr. Goslin, so there's a pinch point, which is way down at the end.
Oh, I know where it is.
Yeah, you're familiar with it. The rest of it, the rest of it is much wider.
Yeah.
So, um, I just want to make that clear. It's not as if, you know, we're trying to cram a road in, you know, for this entire distance. It's just, the pinch point is at the bottom.
Yeah, but the side, where's the sidewalks going to end?
Again, we've requested a waiver for the sidewalks.
No. You're going to have to put sidewalks in one side. We don't require you to put them in both, because it wouldn't make sense.
Correct, right.
To be honest with you. But one side is, no, no sidewalks at all, that's a bad one. Just also on that little note there, that one-foot contour?
Yep.
Unless you're going to make sure that all your free board and every elevation in here matches the two-foot contour line, make them at one foot. In other words, two foot, two foot's too sloppy to make one-foot determinations.
So, the reasoning...
Even the one-foot is, gets marginal in some areas, but, you know, at least it's reasonable.
It's a matter of opinion. The reasoning was that there's a lot of topographic relief, so there's, it's not as if it's flat.
You could grayscale something and put it in the background. There's ways to mitigate the confusion from that, you know. We both know that. I, you know, I don't... I was looking at this, and I says, "Well, you know, if we just cut that road off at that end and just let them build their five lots," but then I realized that probably the road's going to be over 1,500 feet long for a dead end, and you can't do that, right?
Per the settlement agreement, again, if you, if you want to review that.
Oh, I, I'm going to be reviewing that, yeah. But obviously, we would never accept a 15-foot road to begin with. I think, you know, that was...
We understand that there's some nuances here, and this is not your typical subdivision. So, we're doing our best to follow the settlement agreement, first of all, which essentially allows the development and upgrading of Old Common Road, and work with the planning board and address your concerns as we move forward. So, we recognize that this is not a brand-new path.
Now, this road is going to be a huge problem for you and for me to digest until we can get, work our way through it. I'm just being upfront with you.
I appreciate that.
Through the chair, I think just one thing to note as well, which was maybe brought up at the beginning, is that one of the unique circumstances with this definitive subdivision is that this is an existing public right-of-way. Unlike a traditional subdivision where the applicant would be proposing a brand-new street, this is an existing right-of-way that has a defined...
But I'm, but I'm sitting here saying I'm not sure that that is so, so. You have to look at it from my perspective, too. I mean, it was there. We all know it was there years and years and years ago, but things changed. Let's see. What was, you had a couple of other things that I'd probably like to at least get my viewpoint on, the relief.
Levers?
Wavers, yeah. The waiver on Lot One, you're going to have to get creative, because I don't see any reason why we should. We've never given a waiver for that before, so I don't know why we should start now and set a bad precedence. So, you're going to have to do something creative with that.
If I could, just to reiterate, it's not possible, to Mr. McCormick's point, it's not possible to build a roadway that meets your subdivision rules and regulations as if it were a new road. We have constraints because it's an existing right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what makes this situation unique. So, we're happy to work with the board and make it as, you know, as best as we possibly can.
Well, how are you going to get the road and the sidewalks away?
Well, we'll have to...
Explain it to me.
So, there's a pinch point at the bottom of the hill that allows 22 feet of pavement. If there's a way that we can secure an easement from an abutment or something along those lines, we can certainly research that avenue.
I'm just saying, it's...
I understand, I hear you loud and clear, and I appreciate your comments.
And I'm trying to be upfront with you, because I don't want everybody to throw a lot of money away for nothing. There may be another way to access this land than going through that one little spot, but, anyway.
I appreciate your comments.
What was that? There was like eight of them that you had, and about three or four of them I shipped my head at, so.
So, if you have the packet, it's right there.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Paul.
On page six, if you have it. You talked about the contour interval already.
Uh, trees. Curbing material, we don't do bituminous concrete. Is the street going to be, when you're done with it, a public, given to the town as a public street? Or is this going to be a private way with, um...
The intent is...
A homeowner's agreement.
A public road.
If it's a public road, it's granite. If it's a private way with a homeowner's agreement, we can negotiate bituminous concrete or whatever. But if the town's going to own it, it's granite. We don't want to be replacing curbing up there. A sidewalk, yeah, I told you about the sidewalk. The street trees, eh, and street lights. I, for one thing, you should always have a street light underneath or close to a hydrant, so the fire department, so that visually can be seen. You're proposing two hydrants and no lights. I mean, I can't believe you're going to have that whole area pitch black up there and rely on people's lights on the front of their porches to light the streets. I don't think that works, especially in where you've got an intersection street. I know it's on the next phase, but at that intersection, you should have a street light there, too. Minimum. So, I just, when I saw that list, I goes, "Well, I'm not sure that a lot of this will fly." I don't know. I can't speak for my other board members. They, they have no problem with it.
Paul, do you have anything?
Right now, what's the width of the entrance to Old Common Road off of West Main Street?
Uh, it's fairly narrow. I'm going to say it's pretty close to 22 feet, but again, it's just shifted outside of the right-of-way. I can, I can confirm that for you, but it's roughly what we're proposing.
So, what's this pinch point right here?
I think the road goes out on that angle.
So, it's still 22 feet over here?
Are you looking at sheet 13?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So, the pinch point, I know you can't see what I'm pointing at, but the right-of-way juts in.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says proposed stop sign.
Yep.
Just above that, the right-of-way actually has a jog in it. And that's the pinch point that I've been talking about. That's the narrowest point in Old Common Road.
So, you don't have to take any land from that house that's there now?
Well, as, as the plan is before you submitted and designed, we don't need to.
Okay. And as far as the easement, you're going to have to figure something out as far as if it's workable or doable or legal or whatever. That's my only other question. For lots one and two.
Okay. Um, myself, my biggest concern on this is the sidewalk. Um, the conservation area that's up behind there is a very busy place, and for people to be able to be off the road, I think is a lot safer, because some people actually park down in the parking area by Bryley Pond and the tattoo shop. I don't know if you know where I'm talking about.
I do.
Right at the fork there.
Yeah.
So, people park there also, and they'll ride their bikes up, or they'll walk up with... So people park there also, and they'll ride their bikes up, or they'll walk up with whoever.
Via the trail system or via the, the road?
The road.
Okay.
Sometimes they'll, and sometimes they'll be able to jet in. There's a couple entrances from West Main Street as well, but that sidewalk is a pretty
And there's only one detention, right?
There's actually two. There's one here that I pointed out.
Yeah, and then on the next page.
At the end of the, at the cul-de-sac, that captures, mitigate, that mitigates from the high point of the road, so this is the other basin here.
Okay.
And that is located within the 100-foot buffer zone, so we'll be talking about that with the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Hey, Rich, do you have anything else, Rich?
Yeah, I just, I was looking for a couple of things. First of all, I was looking at the North Arrow, and it didn't reference any bearing system, so then I started looking to see if this was on 83, 88 datum. And I don't see a note, is it?
Yeah. It's, it's, the note is on the existing conditions plan, if you go up to the front of the set.
Okay. Two?
Right there at the bottom. Probably small at your scale, but I believe it's referenced there, that's where it typically
Theme flood map. Wildlands.
Usually it mentions the vertical datum in the horizontal.
Yeah, I know. Oh, here it is, vertical datum, and add, okay. 1980, okay, see it now. It is very small. But, I mean, normally people, well, a lot of people I know put.
Put it on the North Arrow.
Put it on the North Arrow, everybody knows immediately.
If you'd like to see it that way, we could, I'd be happy to do that.
You know, that way, it's very clear what's going on.
Okay, so the board members, is that it for now?
I'm good for now.
You're good? Anybody from the public like to speak? Hold on, let me just get my, get out of your way here.
Actually, the sheet that's up here, Steve Stern's Thomas Hill Road, Sheet 14, I don't know if you can show that, Connor. We were talking, there was a lot of talk by Rich and the concern about the 22-foot pavement and the restrictions on that, which I think is very critical, and we've talked about that on other projects. So a recommendation that I would make, if you go to Phase 2, that the cul-de-sacs stay and that at the edge of Lot, between Lot 4 and 5, that become a one, be two ways up to that point from West Main Street to that point, and then it's one, you can't go out that way. So to take the bulk of the development and shoot it out to West Main Street, which you said was the primary access point, where there it gives access to Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and even 5 coming in, but you can't go out that way. I think that would solve a lot of traffic issues as well going out there, so just a suggestion for the board to consider.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? The green hat?
Rick Hollis, 102 Hornway in Briarly Pond. So I'm just not familiar with the process is, like, after this hearing, where, where does it go from here? Are there, I mean, I know we've talked about a number of waivers and doing things differently, and I think there are some concerns about some of that stuff that Mr. Goslin brought up. So what's the, where does the process go from here, as far as?
From here, they, they'll be coming back either two weeks from now or the meeting after that. Depends on them. And they may even come back another time after that until we hammer out all of the issues that the Planning Board has and the public recommendations and, and concerns come in.
Okay, so there's, after, after all that discussion, there's room for, there'd be some notification and?
Yeah, and he'll modify things and make changes that, you know, as we go along.
Okay, so we'll have further opportunity for input?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
In the back?
Got two of them.
Hi, Tina Brady, 242 West Main Street. I know some of you, all you people. I have a question on, I'm gonna be right next to 242. I wanna know what that's gonna look like. I'm gonna have a road next to me. Can you explain my right-of-way and how that's gonna affect my right-of-way?
Chair, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Will we go to Sheet 16?
So again, this is, if I could, just to answer your question. This is the sketch plan for the future build. So what you see here, this is the existing lot right here, and then centered in that is a 50-foot right-of-way. So that'll be a roadway. And then the house that's currently right here will be relocated or a new home built here.
Okay.
So you're, are you here or here?
I wanna know what's going on in the driveway. I have a right-of-way, legal right-of-way.
Yep.
So what does that look like?
Let me see if I can show you something a little bit better than that. There it is. So I, I wanna take your information.
Yes.
So we can, we can sit down and talk about this, but what is going to be here is a strip of property. And I don't wanna speak for the applicants, but there's, there's many options to have your driveway relocated to the new road, slid over. So you're, obviously, we're not gonna impact your driveway.
Okay.
So we should probably meet and talk about the details, and we'll work with you.
Okay. Perfect.
Your name is Tina?
Tina Brady.
Brady. Thank you.
I do have another question.
Sure, go ahead. I'll ask your question.
So now you're gonna have town water come up. I was always told that there was not enough water supply or water line to go up West Main. Be enough water supplied to.
Doesn't it already go up there?
It stops at Lake Singletary.
Yeah, it stops at the, the Fire Department property.
Okay.
But we've already talked to Aquarian, and they've already given us a will-serve letter, as I mentioned, for the whole project.
I did read something about water pressures and stuff, which they did check on.
So they're doing some upgrades.
The infrastructure is gonna be adjusted to correct the problem, I'm sure.
So that'd be something that if our well fails and we choose to go.
You might be able to attach on, I don't know.
So we must lose the restriction on the water, then? If they're gonna fix the well and put more water in there, we no longer have to, gonna hear, see those signs that there's a water moratorium on. All right.
Signs never go away.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Larry Lock for 179 Hornway. And I have one, I have two questions. Is there any tax money being used for this project?
No.
No tax, okay. So there's a lot of wetlands. Has there been envi, endangered species study done for this area? Are the endangered turtles or whatever, has there been any study?
Not that I know of, but they're gonna be before Conservation next week, and they're gonna be talking about water and all that stuff.
I would expect them to do an endangered species study.
I would suggest you go to that meeting at Conservation, too, to be serious, and see what they have to say to make sure they address your concerns, because, you know, the three-legged newt or whatever isn't really our concern, it's the Conservation. You know what I'm saying?
Turtles.
Yeah, well, you ought to spawn it.
Spotted turtles.
If I could, through the chair, just to, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, sir. Thank you. So the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program puts out mapping, and they identify these areas. The site is not located within the natural heritage mapped area, so wildlife study is, is not required. But there's still wetlands, and we'll have to work through that with the Conservation
Gino Pachico, 210 West Main Street. I have major concerns over the width of the road. He claims to have 22 feet. And yeah, he has 22 feet at the opening, but where it kicks out, it does not give you 22 feet. And even if it's close to 22 feet, we're talking nice weather, spring, summer, fall. In the winter, you're gonna get buildup of snow on both sides of that, okay? Then it'll be cut down to 15 feet, it'll be a one-lane road, okay? Past my house and Tim Harris's house, the White House, there are two garages with five doors on each bay that open up directly to the road. There is no way they can put sidewalks on either side of the road. There's no possible way. Both of our driveways open up to this road. There's no possible way. I don't think these guys are putting into account how many bikers and how many walkers use the trail, okay? Most people park across the street so they can get the full walking up the road. If you put a development of 37 houses, he can't claim only five houses are gonna use this road, okay? Anyone coming down West Main Street on that side will use this road, okay? All those people that are gonna try walking up the street with their dogs, biking up the street with their dogs, will now have nowhere to go. They'll be in the road at all times, okay? There will be no sidewalks up there. All these, he claims to need 22 for a subdivision, but it's not gonna be a subdivision, it's gonna be a sub-collection. There's gonna be 37 houses up there, which claims, then he will need 26 feet. He doesn't have 26 feet, he doesn't have over 22 feet, he has nowhere. It's, it's just not gonna happen, okay? Both driveways open up to this road, okay? What he didn't put into account either is past both garages on 210 and 2808, in the middle, on, in the middle of the road that goes up after the garages is a stone wall. That stone wall is about 40, 50 feet high. That wall was put in place for contamination when Harris Oil was in effect, okay? This isn't a wall that was made for vehicles to drive on constantly and constantly and constantly, okay? Out at that road, it's 22, if not less, feet high. An aerial truck, if a fire happens and an aerial truck has to get there, that's 56 feet long, how's it supposed to turn around there? There's no chance, okay? This is not done safely at all, okay? That street, no one can pull in or pull out of it and see a pedestrian now and then stop traffic. West Main Street's one of the fastest roads in Milbury, okay? People fly up this road. No one is gonna be able to stop to wait for another car to pull out of Old Common Road and wait, they're gonna get rear-ended every time. People walking out of Old Common Road to get across the street to the sidewalk will not have room to get to the sidewalk. They'll have to watch out for their lives now, okay? This plan was not, it's, it's not made for public safety, okay? They claim no more, no water will wash down Old Common Road, okay? Old Common Road does have a pitch over 3%, okay? Right now, it's gravel and dirt most of the way. He's gonna pave that road. All that water will run down, he has no way to stop that road. And if it doesn't run down through me, it's gonna run down through the wall that's completely in disarray, trees growing out of it. If you want, I'll bring you pictures next meeting. The wall needs to be fully rebuilt for the road to be put on top of the wall. These are all aspects that they have not even looked over. They've looked over this small thing where they wanna put all these beautiful big houses, and it's all free land up here. You're so close to wetlands, you're on a, on a, one of the fastest roads in Milbury, and you're gonna put two openings, one past a, a split right where two houses, the brown house on the corner is so tall, you can't even see past it. So to have another road there, and he's claiming to put a one-way, to push everyone out this way would be even crazier, because then it'd be even faster. You wouldn't even see people, you'd have to put a streetlight on West Main Street. This doesn't make sense to go through Old Common Road, okay? It just, you have no sidewalks, no safety, 22 feet goes right to the corner of my property line, okay? If I one day wanna put a garage up on the, on my property, I won't be able to, because now I'll be too close to his road, okay? That seems crazy to me, okay? I pay my taxes, I own this road, I've lived in my house since 1999, okay? I know everything up there. Where this cul-de-sac they're putting, and they wanna put a, an extended parking lot for all the bikers and the trail, the water runs directly under that road. You will have to put a bridge, okay? That's not, it's not gravel, it's dirt and wood chips right now. So I, as I just wanna say again, there was no way you can put sidewalks up for the first 300 feet of the road. It's just not gonna happen. It's my driveway, I'm not gonna give anyone my driveway to put sidewalks up, okay? The whole drainage system, if you get, if he paves the whole road, all the water will run down and run right into my driveway and run, in my grass, okay? It's not gonna magically run down the center of the road and beautifully into the road, into the drainage system, it's just not gonna happen, okay? It's gonna wash away my driveway. You can't put any, any good drainage up there that'll actually work without sending it into the wetlands or down to wash away on West Main Street. But I just wanna say again, I will not allow any easements or any right-of-ways or any variances for a sidewalk or streetlights or any of that to be put in on my, 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 my land, per se. It's just not gonna happen, okay? Thank you for your time.
Gino, I have one, I have one question. The wall that you're referring to?
Yeah, the wall behind Harris.
Is that where the storage lot is down below?
Yes, yes, that wall has trees. If you go down there, behind, no, it's private property, Tim will probably let you on there.
Yeah.
That has trees, that was a contamination wall for Harris Oil when, if anything was to happen for a fire. That's not a, a wall that is made to hold weight on top of, you know? Over time, that, this, this wall is completely decayed. There's trees growing out of it, you can stick your head into some of the holes. All that gets filled with water in the wintertime and just freezes up, and the wall gets worse and worse. So if they're serious, and you guys are seriously gonna approve them for this, they have to take off the whole wall. And if I, if I'm correct, Tim's land, as being an oil company, I'm pretty sure there's contaminated soil back there, too. So all that soil will have to be taken out, new soil will have to be brought in, a new road will be put in so that it can accommodate all these cars that he plans to move up Old Common Road.
Thank you, Gino.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Go ahead, sir. How's our time doing?
Hi, I'm Mike, excuse me, Mike Conan, 208 West Main Street. I own the house directly on Old Common Road, the two-family going up there. My only concern, two things I have, is one, the detention basin. One of them looks like it's planned for in front of my property. And another concern that you guys brought up was about an easement for something like that going across the property. Does that, how does that hamper my property for any, anything that I wanna do on, on that piece of land? As well as, where is power coming from to feed these first five houses up here? Because there are no telephone poles, and do you plan on doing underground from?
Yes.
West Main? Okay, that's good. I just didn't want any wires going across the front of my house. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Could you help come out with an answer on that easement?
The easement, I'm not exactly sure where his property is, but the easement that I'm talking about is farther up Old Common Road in front of two of the proposed lots, not in front of his property.
Right.
I agree. It's up, it's up a ways from his property.
Yeah, it's up, it's, it's west of his property. I'm not sure what sheet that's on, sorry. I keep the big plan set. There we go.
He might be looking at the riprap.
Oh, the small section of riprap that, that's in this area. That riprap is in the right-of-way, that small depression.
That, that's in the old pocket area that's there right now, isn't it?
It's not quite, it's a little bit to the east of that existing parking area.
Anybody else in the audience?
Anybody from Zoom? I haven't seen Fran. Oh, okay. Fran's good? I don't see any hands up, so.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to September 22nd, 2025 at 7:00. Does that give you enough time? Or do you want?
Yeah, so we'll work through the comments that we've received, and we'll shoot for that as a goal, and if we need to continue, we'll certainly reach out through.
Yeah, as long as you let us know.
Connor.
Yep, that's fine. Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Beautiful, thank you. Appreciate your input.
I'll second that.
I got a motion that's been seconded. Tony?
Comment?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, well, roll call, yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Myself on a yes. I don't know if Fran can, uh, hear us or if he can, uh, chime in, we'll give him a second. Uh, if not, um, we'll take it as a yes. Or a non-vote. We got four here, so.
Yeah. Is so, I just, so I'm clear, is, there's a fifth voting member on Zoom?
Yeah, I don't think he can though. It's okay, we have four of us that.
Yeah, I just, there could be some significance there if another board member misses a meeting and so I just want to sort of understand how that's going to play out. It would be beneficial if we had five members, certainly, yes.
I believe he was supposed, he's on Zoom somewhere, but he's, you know what happened?
Oh, yeah.
So I doubt he can even sit up and.
Right, he's probably laying down, so.
Okay. I know he heard it. I can, I can hear him sizzling. Any chance? I brought a whole thing of lemonade.
You want a break?
Yeah, I need a break.
You need a rest?
I need a rest for a couple of minutes.
Um, Kevin, we'd like to take five, please.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
My name is Ron Barron. I am a land use manager at Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC. I'm joined online by my colleague, Gabe Trevor, who's an associate planner at CMRPC. The purpose of my visiting you tonight is to talk about a project that the town had entered into with, uh, CMRPC to review the town's subdivision rules and regulations. We had, over the years, been looking at several, undertaken some projects to create some model by, um, subdivision bylaws that hopefully incorporate, uh, the updated, uh, Mass General Law Regulations, um, and are ones that will hopefully be simpler and easier for the town to work with. We are doing this to, we, last year, we, uh, applied for, um, funding through the state's EEA program. Um, we received that funding, um, it came to us in June of this year, so we already have started working on this. Um, we have, what I wanted to do tonight is just sort of talk about what we've done, what we're planning to do, what the timeline is going to be, and introduce it to you and find out if you all had any questions for us on this. So as far as the project objectives, the objective of this project is to, as I said, improve the clarity of language, align the subdivision regulations with the town goals in terms of land use. Uh, as you all know, the town has undertaken several, uh, major land use projects over the last few years. You updated your master plan in 2019, just finished your housing production plan. And our intention is to, uh, take what was done in those plans and apply them to the subdivision regulations to try to get them, uh,
We tried, we aimed to please.
I don't have any questions, Tony.
Nope.
Fran, I heard you are there. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, hi, I'm sorry, I'm a little late getting on tonight.
That's all right, sir.
Yeah, well, if I, recollect me here, wasn't this second house put on here by an A and R plan?
Through the chair, no, I don't believe so. I do believe it received some kind of a variance in the 90s.
Yeah.
But it, to my knowledge, there has not been an A and R on this lot before.
No.
Another question. You have a 15-foot wide access easement. Now, if you make this into two separate lots with two different homos, is that a right, is that gonna be a right-of-way or a road? How, how are you planning on addressing that?
It's an existing paved driveway that's been there forever, and it's not gonna become a right-of-way. Well, it is, it's gonna become an easement, an access easement.
So it'll be an easement then?
Yeah, it'll just be an easement for the second house.
Okay, and this is probably a question I probably shouldn't ask, but these two houses on this one lot, is that one family that owns these two houses?
Yeah.
The owner is confirming, shaking your head yes.
It is. So why are you making this into two lots? Are you planning on selling one of them?
She'd have to, she'd have to answer that.
Yeah.
So they're possibly thinking of selling the front house, I guess.
I don't know, Fran, if you caught that, but they said possibly yes, looking to possibly sell the front house.
And they're gonna, they're gonna issue an easement for themselves in the back lot?
The back lot doesn't, the back lot does not need an easement. The back lot has, owns the property that flows from the street to the back. So the back lot does not need an easement. The second lot would need the easement from the back lot.
Right. Those are, so those are two different owners, right?
No. No, I own both.
You own, okay.
She owns, she owns.
So I'm confused now.
Okay, she owns the two lots.
15-foot easement, you own that land too?
Who owns the back, you own the back lot? Her granddaughter owns the back lot.
Oh, okay, that's, that's good, because you can't by law grant an easement to yourself.
No, she does.
Okay, so when you said you own, you own both of them, going, oh, wait a minute, well, we, red flags, you know.
That's what I was driving at.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, they're all set.
They're all set on that aspect?
Yeah, I am.
Well. Okay. All right, you know what I think of A and Rs, but that's decided.
That will never change.
No. Because it's a way of circumventing us.
Anyway.
Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Make a motion to endorse the A and R plan entitled 137 Grafton Street, Milbury, Mass. dated August 27, 2025, appeared by Continental Land Survey LLC.
Second?
Yeah, the motion's been seconded. Roll call vote, Tony?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that's unanimous.
You're all set.
Next, we have zoning bylaw discussion, ADUs.
Sorry, through the chair, I think the next item on the agenda is subdivision rules and regulations. CMR PC is here to give a.
Okay, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ron Barron. I am a land use manager at Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, CMR PC. I'm joined online by my colleague, Gabe Trevor, who's an associate planner at CMR PC. The purpose of my visiting you tonight is to talk about a project that the town had entered into with CMR PC to review the town's subdivision rules and regulations. We had, over the years, been looking at several, undertaken some projects to create some model subdivision bylaws that hopefully incorporate the updated Mass General Law regulations and are ones that will hopefully be simpler and easier for the town to work with. We are doing this to, we, last year, we applied for funding through the state's EEA program. We received that funding. It came to us in June of this year, so we already have started working on this. We have, what I wanted to do tonight is just sort of talk about what we've done, what we're planning to do, what the timeline is going to be, and introduce it to you and find out if you all had any questions for us on this. So as far as the project objectives, the objective of this project is to, as I said, improve the clarity of language, align the subdivision regulations with the town goals in terms of land use. As you all know, the town has undertaken several major land use projects over the last few years. You updated your master plan in 2019, just finished your housing production plan. And our intention is to take what was done in those plans and apply them to the subdivision regulations to try to get them up to modern standards. What we are looking at in terms of tasks is we, the, we're doing, undertaking a number of initial meetings. We have met with the town planner, we have met with the fire department, police department, and the DPW. We've already taken their comments on this. We are doing this introductory meeting to the planning board tonight. The next task is to analyze all of the sections of your subdivision regulations, comparing them to updates to Mass General Law and to the model bylaw that we had developed. And then the final task would be, and we were talking every single section, we're gonna go through every single one in the subdivision and compare it to that and try to see if there's any areas where it can be modernized. Obviously, any suggestions that we have, we will bring to the board for you all to review. You know, this isn't something that we're just gonna be doing in isolation. And ultimately, what we're going to do is to produce any changes that you want us to suggest out of this, any changes you want to make from our suggestions, we will produce language for you that you'll be able to take to a town meeting and put on the town meeting warrant. So the, as I said, what we've done to date is we've started looking at the regulations. We've only done a preliminary analysis so far. The main thing that we've been doing is introducing ourselves to the, to the staff members that the project scope had asked us to get in touch with, again, fire department, DPW, police department, we've got their comments. And we are in the process right now of starting to go through the regulations and make our comments on it. And that's, we're in the very preliminary stages of that. The timeline for this is we have funding through June of 2026. Originally, this had been funded for, for, until June of 2025, but the funding was late, so we actually get another year to be able to complete this for the town.
I've got the money already, right?
Oh, yeah, we have the money, it's all set.
The way the political landscape is now, boy, just 'cause they said they're gonna give you the money, doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna get it.
Well, we did, we did eventually get it. So the money is here, and we are working on it right now. So the only thing that we'll be asking from you all is, as we go through this over the next few months, we will obviously be providing you with updates, we'll be providing you with any comments and suggestions for alterations that we have. Everything will obviously be up to the town to decide whether or not you want to go forward with any recommendations. And if you do, like I said, we'll help you provide, develop the language that you can put into the, to a warrant article and present at town meeting. So that's essentially the rub of my, my comments tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them. I have some logistical questions, but you guys seem like you have a lot on your agenda, so if, unless you want me to go through them right now, I'd be happy just to give them to Connor, and we can work those out as we go. But were there any questions from you right now for us?
I have one question.
Sure.
How do you plan on approaching us on items? Are you gonna start with one in, on your first meeting? Are you gonna go 3.2, or how are you gonna do that?
So we're gonna be.
There's a lot of information.
Yeah, we're gonna be going through section by section. The way the project was, the scope was worked out when we got the grant, is tasks two and three on that are, you know, the first introduction purpose, going all through all of the various sections, essentially numerically. And what we will do is we'll put our comments on it, that we will provide the board, we'll provide Connor and the board with the comments and recommendations we have, allow you guys to give us feedback on them, and then we'll just go systematically through that. And we will do as, as much as we can to try to get through the entire thing in the time that we're allotted. Obviously, that's, it's a lot of work, but, you know, we're, we're, I think we're capable of getting it to, by the end of the, the, the town meeting, by the next town meeting.
You're talking the November one?
Oh, no, we're talking about the summer town meeting. Annual town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not that ambitious.
Okay. Fran?
Yeah, I got a couple. On this ADU thing, I think we need to add transit station must be added.
Fran? Fran?
We're not on that yet.
We're not on that yet.
Not on that yet.
Okay, so we're not, we have, I'm just saying, before they write everything up, though, shouldn't we throw some input at them?
Yeah, but we're on a different subject right now with CMR PC.
I think what Fran is saying is, we're probably, you know, we're looking at some of this stuff right now. We need to get it to them so that they can incorporate it in their decision-making, right?
Through the chair, we're discussing the subdivision regulation update here. We have Emily lined up to discuss the ADUs and inclusionary zoning bylaws right after this, so.
Okay.
He should know, if they're gonna do their job, they should know everything.
Let's just do one thing at a time here.
Yeah.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying. Have them draw something all up, and then they come to us and say, no, we need this, we need that, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. Doesn't it make sense to draw it all up and then change it all again?
Well, that's probably why we're gonna finish up the ADUs tonight.
Okay.
It's next.
Okay.
All right, so you're gonna go through it systematically, and we'll know what we'll be looking at beforehand?
Yes, absolutely. Any comments that we have, anything we want to review with you at the planning board meeting, we will send to Connor, and he will share with you in plenty of time for you to review it before we get here, so that way you can give us the comments before we go ahead. Because what we're gonna do first, before we start recommending language changes, is we are going to flag things that we think, okay, maybe this isn't as clear as it could be, maybe this isn't something that is considered a best practice, maybe it's not allowed under Mass General Law anymore. Those are gonna be the first pass comments we'll do, and then when we actually start talking about the language changes, that'll be a more in-depth conversation. But that'll be the first thing we do, so that way you'll have an opportunity to give us your immediate comments about what the language ought to sound like. So it's, it's gonna be an iterative process.
Okay. All right, so, and you asked Con, you asked if, I'm sorry, you had a question also that you wanted to say more? Is that what it was?
Well, so I did have a couple of questions about logistics in terms of when town meeting is, when you have to have the warrant closed, things like that. I can discuss them right now, but if you feel like you're a little pressed for time, I could always address those with Connor.
Yeah, yeah, call him, I'll, he's, he's the best source for that.
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't even know his memory is good enough to remember all the dates. You know what I mean?
That's why, that's why we write it down.
That's why we have computers, unfortunately.
Yeah, the, can I jump in here? Because I just, I just got one little concern.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's turning into be a bigger concern than I thought it would ever be. You know, this is fine, but, you know, when are we gonna tell the general public about this? I mean, you know, one of the complaints I had the last couple of years was, was we were doing things behind the town people's backs. Okay? So, and I never tried to do that, but I got accused of it at the time. But anyway, I'm just wondering if you give us information to work with? How are we gonna get that? You know, obviously, we want to get the public's feedback, too. We don't wanna wait till the end.
Well, we'll be discussing it. We'll be discussing it at our meetings. Every time he comes up with a new.
It'll be here.
It'll be right here.
Yeah, through the chair, before any changes to the subdivision rules and regulations can be made, it would require a public hearing with the planning board.
Okay.
The other thing I would add is that one of the things we've done with other communities, and we can certainly do it here, is we have looked at putting the, creating a page online where we can put progress on, on the, we can, we can put up, progress updates on this website and collect feedback through that. So say we come to the planning board meeting, I can provide the public access with a QR code, we can have postings in town so that if people are interested, they can find, there are ways that we can do this, where we don't necessarily have to take all of the time to do a full outreach effort.
Right, no, that's not what I'm saying. Just trying to get their input.
Yeah.
And sometimes it takes a long time through nobody's fault for the information to come out in the end. And it's better to let them know upfront, and when it's early on than at the very end.
Yeah. So, and we're, we're happy to do that, to put that, usually we'll have some sort of a, or, you know, we'd like to have some sort of a, a website that will be able to collect comments from the public if they want to weigh in on it. It's not the most direct way, and it's, you know, it's very self-selecting, but.
That would probably be a good idea, because apparently our IT department's having trouble getting some documents online here and there. So anything you can help us out with?
Okay.
I would appreciate.
Yeah, we can definitely come up with something. All right, well, if there's nothing else, thank you so much for your time. I'm looking forward to working with you all on this, and we'll be in touch soon. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Section 46.2, accessory dwelling units.
Through the chair, just before we dive into ADUs specifically, just to kind of recap where we left off from the last meeting, the next three agenda items, which is zoning bylaw discussions for ADUs, inclusionary zoning, and water body protection. The board voted at the last meeting to submit a placeholder article for the fall town meeting warrant for those three items. And tonight, we're looking at kind of finalizing the language or finalizing those warrant articles, because they will need to be submitted before the warrant is closed later this month by the Board of Selectmen. So just to kind of frame the conversation that way, before we dive into ADUs.
Yeah, just introducing myself, Emily Lobitz from CMR PC. Hopefully, everyone got, on the board, got a chance to read the language that will be on the warrant article for the new accessory dwelling units bylaw, which will replace the existing one in the town zoning bylaws. I don't have really much to say about it, but if there are any questions or recommended changes that you want us to incorporate, welcome any comments.
Do you, Bruce? I'm assuming you touched on what comments we had from the last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we had.
I kind of figured that.
amended the transit station definition. Trying to remember what. But yeah, everything that we touched on in the last meeting was incorporated. And I believe town council also reviewed it as well, and so those comments are incorporated.
Any idea what those councils, what the town council decided that was not, was it just a wording or the way the wording was?
Uh, yeah, I can.
Or is it a policy change by the town council?
I can review those for you. I know for Article 5 definitions, we had originally proposed to duplicate the definition that is in the ADU section of the bylaw, in the general definition section of the bylaw. Town council, just for clarity's sake, suggested we just make the definition in the general section, say C Section 46 2.2. And the other main change was. Section 42, 46.2.3, 3, non-conformance, that's page 5 of 6. Under the section, section 6, the determination would be made by the Board of Appeals instead of the planning board, which is consistent with state law, so that was changed. And also, just a, I guess, a reminder for, again, all three of the zoning bylaw discussions that we'll be having, if they move forward on, for, to the fall town meeting, there will still be a public hearing between now and then for the, with the planning board, for you, for the board to provide a recommendation and for the public to provide input or comment.
Okay.
Questions?
Go ahead, sir.
Will there be enough time between when we put this before the public? I mean, and when we have to vote on it to get on a town warrant? This isn't gonna be a one-night, one-and-done, right? Jam-down-the-throat approach? It's gonna be at least two nights?
I mean, that's totally up to the board. You've already voted to submit these as placeholder articles for the fall town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And I think if the board votes tonight to submit final language, we would schedule a public hearing for the next available meeting date, which would be in October. And the town meeting is set for November 4.
Right. So here's my question, okay? If we get comments from the public in October, and it's a good suggestion, we like it, can we change it before the election? Before the thing?
No, the warrant, the warrant would be closed by that point, so it would have to be done, any changes would have to be done on the town meeting floor.
Yeah, to be honest, at this point, I think we should cancel all three or four of those things and run them out to the spring, so we get enough time for people to.
I don't agree with that.
To do what they.
We had the public working with us on all this stuff.
We did?
Yeah, through all of it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Steve Sterns. So while some of the people have had an opportunity to come and speak on this stuff, the problem that we keep running into is that stuff is done here, the general public is unaware, and you close it, and this is not necessarily criticism, it's, you know, I think we need to change the process. It's, you put it on the warrant, there's a public hearing that does no good, because any comments the public makes are useless, they might as well just go to town meeting, because there's no opportunity to change it. And I think that's the process that needs to change, because these documents have not been made available to the public. I did a public records request for all of the documents for tonight, these aren't included. All the stuff, most of the stuff down below that we're gonna be covering from here on, I wasn't provided. That's an open meeting law violation and a public records violation. So, you know, the transparency is nonexistent at this point, and that's probably by design, but the public should have a stay, a say in this, because it's the public who is the town. And, you know, there's a general feeling that things are just being done in secret, even though you do some of it at meetings, that it's all decided before we get here. And one other comment I'll make about public comments is during the Rice Pond Village project, and even before the Board of Appeals, I've raised to Connor that things we say are never encapsulated in his memos to the board, and what his response to me was, well, that's up to the board members. If it resonates with them, then they can put it on there, but he's not gonna include it in his documents. That's, that's not public comment, that's exclusion. So I think some things need to change, and I agree with Rich. If the deadline is that close, we ought to wait till spring, because that's the fair and right thing to do.
No, I'm not waiting. I don't wanna wait, I wanna vote on it. I want it to be done. I mean, we all did this together. This has already been done. Have a seat, please.
Excuse me?
Have a seat, please. Thank you.
All right, violation.
Thank you. So we've gone over this with CMR PC, with the people who wanted to be involved. Every time we go to town meeting, I agree, nobody knows what's going on, they don't understand what's going on, they have comments, they have things to say. But there's no way that we can possibly pull those people into these meetings. It's not possible. We've tried, it doesn't work. We're doing it now, right now, at this time. Where are they?
I have some further comments.
They're not here.
I have further comments, can I make them?
Not yet, I'm not done. Not yet. I'm not done. Furthermore, this is not a public hearing. I don't have to let you comment. I'm letting you comment out of the kindness of my heart. And the board is, feels the same way. I don't have to let you comment. Just make sure you understand that too, okay? We're trying to be nice to you people, and you're making it very hard. So, right here at the top of this by law, the first one that we're talking about is the by law that we're going to submit to the townspeople, Article one, section fourteen, Article two, section twenty-two, section twenty-three, and so on and so on. And then there's a rationale underneath it. And is that what you were talking about that you got to see? And you didn't get to see the rest of it? Is that what you're saying? So, when people go to vote, ninety-five percent of the people read that. They don't want to see all the rest of this. They have no interest. But they don't. We've tried to pull them in. We can't pull them in. So, that being said, I want all the work that we did on this article to be done tonight so we could submit it to Tom Warren. That's what I want. I don't know about the rest of these guys, but I would like to be able to push this through tonight. We asked for all the corrections that have been made. You put your two cents in, Terry put her two cents in. Nobody else was here, so what can I do? I can't go out and pull them in with a fish and rail or anything.
Can I address that comment?
Sure.
So, like I said, we did not get these documents. Connor showed a little bit of them on the screen. That's not reviewing, actually Emily, I believe, showed it. That's not reviewing the document because we didn't have the documents. That's not reviewing them. That's getting snippets that we can comment on.
And when it's public hearing, you'll be able to look at it and everything that you said is in there.
But public comment...
Everything that we said is in there.
The public hearing, it's too late to make any changes.
Okay, so I'm not here to argue about it. That's how I feel. And that's it. There's no way I can pull people in to make them listen to what we do. This is not something people want to do. Fran?
Yeah, I, I want to comment. I agree with Rich. I agree with Steve. I don't know what the big push is for the fall meeting, but we got the push. I know we talked about these things, but there's still some things on this ADU that I haven't seen the final draft on. I haven't seen it, okay? Is transit station included in this ADU? Instead of just a bus stop?
Through the chair, yes. The revision to the transit station that was discussed at last meeting was included. It's in the draft that is in your packet.
Okay, and we also changed the parking, not to a minimum of one, not up to one?
Did we change parking?
Believe so, but I'm just double checking.
Yeah.
I thought we did that.
It's there at some place.
A while ago.
On page five.
Yes, a minimum of one.
Yep.
Okay. And the transit station is addressed also?
Yes.
Where is that transit station addressed? What page?
Um, in the definition. Yeah, page four.
Get to page four.
Where? Which one?
Right where it says transit station. What do you have?
Page four.
I think you got the wrong one. This is inclusionary zone. The next one.
It's page four. Thanks, though.
Yep. I'm asking the board a question. What do you think we could possibly gain by waiting until spring? I, I don't understand. We tried to get people in here and public involved, and we had public involved, two people showed up. What do you think we have to gain by waiting another term?
Well, some of the stuff, nothing, except that our process is broken. We should not, we shouldn't be jamming this down their throat at a meeting and saying, "Okay, we heard you, but we already submitted it, so tough luck." I mean, it's like, that's the part that we need to fix.
But the way I understand it is if, if we need to make a change, this has already been submitted. If we need to do something, we can do it on the next meeting in the spring, right? If we need to adjust it?
If this gets submitted and approved by town meeting in the fall, yeah, we'd have to go back to town meeting again in the spring to change it again.
To make an, uh...
That's what you're asking.
A change or, or an addition or subtraction or whatever.
Uh, yes, but I, I think...
You know, if somebody comes up with a good idea at the public meeting, then we shouldn't just automatically push it through and get it voted on. We should fix it.
And through the chair...
And that will require waiting another session. At the town meeting, we'll just have to say that we can't, you know, there's been a modification and we couldn't, unless we can submit the modification at the town meeting.
Yeah, we, the board has done that in the past where you can recommend adoption of a zoning by law amendment with an additional, with a, with a modification. So, that would be the motion that would be made on the town floor if something comes out of the public hearing that, that the board would like to change.
I feel a little better about that than just having a public hearing and shutting them off.
What happens if it gets defeated at public, uh, town meeting?
It would depend on the planning board's recommendation at the public hearing, but if it gets defeated at a town meeting, it just would not become...
Well, if it can do something else.
Become effective in the zoning bylaws, and depending on whether the board provides a positive or recommend, or negative recommendation, would affect the repetitive petition.
We'd have to wait, right?
The ability to wait two years to bring it back.
So, in the meantime, we'd have to go by whatever the state dictates.
And we would have no ADU laws. We would have nothing.
We'd have to go by the state.
Well, we're generally already going by the state because our current ADU by law is largely unenforceable.
Right.
This by law gets us in line with the state with a few things that are, you know, as we've discussed over the last few months that are kind of tailored to the town of Milbury. But yeah, if this were not passed in the fall, we would continue to have our current ADU by law, which is not compliant with the state law.
So...
That was the whole idea of doing this in the first place.
So, if somebody came to building inspector, he'd have to go by whatever the state says because ours is no good anymore.
So, yes, and that's currently what's happening, yes.
And that's why we were doing this.
No, I understand. So, if we can, don't do this now and wait till the spring, between now and the spring meeting, the building inspector has to go by whatever the state has laid out.
Yep.
So, I say we should try to get it to fall town meeting and modify it. If this public has things they want to change on the floor of the town meeting.
As long as they get their voices heard, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
All right.
Modification, modifications can be done. So, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, and just to, yes. The, the text that we would submit tonight would be what the board has looked at. If, and that's kind of locked in after the board, the selectmen closed the warrant. But if in the public hearing, the board or the public has a change that the board wants to make as part of their recommendation, you can do that, and then that would be your motion at town meeting.
At the meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. You get all that?
So, we, we couldn't change it at the public hearing? It has to be done on the floor of the town meeting if you want to change something?
By, by the town, by the time we have the public hearing, the warrant will be closed. So, the, the language that gets like mailed out to everyone ahead of the town meeting will be finalized. So, if you, if the board wants to make a change or if the public has comments that prompt the board to want to make a change, that would have to be done at town meeting.
Okay.
And that's the only way we're going to get that answer anyway, because nobody's going to come here and do it. I'm sorry.
Just, just for a heads up though, for the next shit, then stuff down the road. Sorry. Can we try to get one meeting in between, you know, get the public, and then we do our vote and then we go to the town meeting? Instead of, we do the vote, town meeting, you know, the, the people, and then we go to town meeting? We got to flip it.
There'd be two people here. Steve and Terry would be here.
So...
It's the same thing.
So, we'll make a quick meeting?
They've been helping us, so...
I like that, and make a quick meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Fran?
Oh, I still got my hand up. Yeah, well, all right. I didn't see that document that she put up on the screen, Emily put on the screen. I don't have that document. Where was that? On SharePoint or something?
It was in your package.
Was it in the package I picked up Friday?
Through the chair, it should have been in the, in your package. It was also in SharePoint.
Well, it wasn't in my package.
I saw it in SharePoint last week, I think.
I mean, the page that she showed with the transit station, I didn't see that. I know we talked about it, but I didn't see it.
You don't have papers that have draft written across it in gray?
No, I didn't see it.
Well, if you're able to pull up SharePoint, now you're, it is in there.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to submit the language for the ADU zoning by law amendment for the fall special town meeting as outlined in the proposed draft.
Second.
Okay, I get a motion. It's been seconded. Tony?
Yes.
Fran?
No, only because I think we're pushing it too quickly.
Uh, Rich?
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
Paul?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We did go over this two or three meetings in a row, so it's been a paramount exposure.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so that was four to one in favor.
You got one through. Don't you feel good now?
I feel better, yes, thank you.
Next up is inclusionary zoning.
All right. So, based on our conversation at the previous planning board meeting, I wrote up a draft by law for an inclusionary zoning policy for the town. Hopefully you had a chance to kind of look through that and see if it aligned with kind of the goals of what you wanted out of a by law like this. So, we talked about it at the last meeting. Here, actually, I can share my screen as well. And it is in the format now of how the town warrant article will look. So, we've got the rationale, purpose and intent, definitions. I'm just going to skip down to kind of the meat of this, which is fifty-three point three and fifty-three point four on page two. So, at the previous meeting, we had discussed having smaller projects be required to pay a, like a payment in lieu to the municipal affordable housing trust fund. And larger projects would have the option of creating affordable units or making a payment. So, I'll just go through the language here. So, fifty-three point four. For projects that include five to fourteen dwelling units, the applicant shall make a cash payment to the Milbury Municipal Affordable Housing Trust equal to three percent of the total construction value of all building permits for the development, including trade permits.
And just to be clear, this, this covers, so if there's ten, they have to do a low income, and then if they get four more, they, they do a cash donation, is that how it is?
Yeah, we changed it around a little bit. So, this one is, we bumped it up to between five and fourteen units. That will just be a required payment, so not a required creation of any units. And then fifteen or more, they have to make a contribution of actual units or they could choose to make a payment of three percent of the construction cost.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Three percent is chump change. You're not going to get one develop, you're not going to get one unit in here.
I do have an example I can also share.
Okay.
I did, just did a, just like a quick calculation based on like a pro forma I had used before. So, let me just... Okay. So, this first like scenario here, if it was to be a ten unit multifamily rental project, under the proposed by law, the, using like a pro forma that I've used about a year ago or so, so it might need to change a little bit, but estimating it would cost about two hundred and fifteen thousand per unit to construct or two point one five million for a developer just for construction costs, not including soft costs. Three percent of that would be a contribution of sixty-four thousand five hundred. So, that's not nothing, but...
It's chump change.
Yeah.
We need to, the sec three's got to go to six to eight percent. We want them to build a housing. I don't know about you. I don't care about the, I don't want the money. I want the housing for the, for the, for the people and in order to turn around and presentize.
I personally thought it was going to be on the tenth house.
What's that?
I thought it was going to be on the tenth house. We got a house.
Yeah, I thought, I didn't think we gave them an option after.
I know we, we were doing the money thing for under...
Yeah. I agree with that.
For five or something like that.
Yeah, but three percent is...
Five to nine, but I think based on recommendation from town council, we upped that a little bit, just from their experience.
I can kind of summarize that. So, yeah, town council reviewed the by, this by law as well. One of their recommendations is they've seen this in other towns and they, and I, I have seen this as well, is that a lot of small developments have a very difficult time financing and managing a, an affordable, actually constructing an affordable unit. There's a lot of administration, ongoing administration that, that goes into it, and it can be a deterrent from actually making any of these developments happen. So, we kind of, thinking about that balance, we had pushed the trigger for requiring an onsite affordable unit from ten to fifteen. So, any multifamily development, five units to fourteen units would have to pay three percent of the total construction cost to the Milbury Affordable Housing Trust. And anything five, fifteen units or more would have the option of constructing the units onsite or paying into the affordable housing trust. And I will say the, the three percent construction cost number, something that a lot of other communities use. And I, you know, I, I think that's based on what is feasible for developments to happen. I think if it were pushed significantly higher than that, it would essentially prohibit any development in town because it would not allow any development to happen.
And they would allow them to, and they'd just build the units instead of giving us the cash. We're trying, we're trying to incentivize them to build the units, which is tough, I admit. But if you give them a loophole, a three percent, they're going to take it. Every one of them, because they're going to go with the bottom line.
Well, and through the chair, I don't know if it's necessarily loophole. The town obviously would get hard cash into the affordable housing trust, which it can then use for different programs to support affordable housing in town.
Then we can get a whole bunch of forty Bs jammed down our throat because we're not meeting the requirements, because we're giving the, the people that are building the stuff the money to cash out. to cash out, and, you know, I just. What are we doing here? Is basically the question I ask all of us. Are we really trying to push this? You know, I got into the housing thing and I'm trying to make it work.
I don't like the sounds of that thing either, because we want the housing, like you said, that's what we're looking for, the housing.
Yes.
We're not looking for the extra dough. But I don't, I don't like that they changed it to fourteen, at ten, it should be a house. That's it, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board, if you want to change it back, we can. I guess, like I said, the feedback from town council.
I'd like to see the three percent go to five percent too.
I guess I would caution that it may lead to situations where no one, no one is able to develop.
People are gonna wanna develop in Millbury. They like the town. It's a good town, it's a good place to do business. They'll find a way. I'm just looking out for, trying to look out for a housing stock, but I. I don't know how else to do it.
That's what this was all about, so. I agree with you, Rich.
We can also add a sentence in the bylaw as well, saying that the town much prefers to have affordable units built versus any kind of payment.
In reality, they're just gonna look at the bottom line, and that's what they're gonna do. End of story, you know. I like to think that nice guys are still around, but not when it comes to building like these. You know, they're gonna.
Building costs a fortune now, so.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna.
So I think I heard three potential changes floated. One would be to change the development, the payment in lieu fee from three percent to five percent. The trigger from payment in lieu to constructing the unit from fifteen back down to ten. And maybe not even allowing a payment in lieu for anything ten or greater.
Well, I'd say at least, I'd say fifteen or greater. What about you? In other words, no cashing out if you're building fifteen units or more.
No, I think they should have to, if they built a ten, if they built twelve, they should have to give us some cash for those other two.
So at fifteen, he has to be a host, or an apartment or whatever.
Is that what you're saying, Connor?
Right now, it's drafted as if it's fifteen or more, you have to build the units of housing. If, but there's also the option to do a payment in lieu.
Well, we wanna change that, we wanna change that to ten. Right? So it's an automatic, they have to, one of those ten has to be affordable housing. Right? That's the way it looks, right?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. Is there, Emily, maybe, is there any data out there that shows what we're trying to get at here? Where the town adopts that ten units plus a five percent, or more than three? Anything more than three, I just wanna see. I'm curious about if there's towns or cities, towns out there that have that in place, so that we can kind of see what was done there. I don't know if you have anything in mind now, I know you came up with one just now at the three percent.
Yeah, I haven't heard of more than three percent.
And the reason why I'm asking is, I'm trying to see, kind of, if they did do that, what did it do to the building? You know, past that point, you know, once they adopted the, that change. Was there any building, did the town go up, down, you know, sideways, wherever? You know, what happened? I know it's late to ask that question, but it might help think about what direction we might want to take this as well.
Can I just talk to Tony through your chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, you have to understand that we really don't have a ton of buildable land in Millbury anymore.
Yep.
Okay? And we're trying to meet these housing standards the state is jamming down our throat.
Which we're never gonna meet.
Which we're never gonna meet, but what, you know, so. But we keep talking about, well, we'll give them breaks, we'll give them breaks, we'll give them, no! Five percent, you know, cut it and say you will do this. Otherwise.
Don't.
Our portable housing units, we're gonna go lower in the percentage rates for every unit that, 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 the new units that go up. We're gonna be in worse shape than we were before. We gotta, we gotta cut it at, cut it at the stem, you know what I'm saying? Stop it, stop from bleeding.
Through the chair?
Yep.
So at fifteen and up, no payment in lieu?
No, they gotta build it.
Okay. From five to fourteen, they can do payment in lieu at five percent?
Yeah, they could, yeah, yep.
Five percent?
Yep. And the, and the little guys will pay out five percent too, just keep it at five percent.
That's the only change?
Fifteen of the two, two P things.
I guess, I mean, I.
Now, wait a minute.
I think it's.
You said, you said ten, ten a minute ago, though.
No, I said fifteen and up. Nothing to do with ten, fifteen and up, they have to, no payment in lieu.
Just.
From five to fourteen, they can do either or at five percent.
Right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It does.
Now, what happens to the one, one through five?
Nothing.
Nothing, they just.
They don't have to build anything?
No.
So yeah.
They don't have to pay anything either.
I think a lot of towns would view one through four units as being very small and really, that's a lot of like, single owner occupied situations that, you know, really put this burden on to those small, very small projects.
So the only change is the five percent?
And, and I think if I heard it right, removing the option for fifteen or more from doing a payment in lieu, they would have to build the unit.
They have to build it.
They have to build it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we can make those adjustments.
Yeah, okay, and I think you had mentioned, yeah, if like there's extra, like a combination of units and payment over fifteen, or do we just want to do just units, forget any payment?
Just units.
Okay.
No pay, don't give them an op, don't opt out.
Well, it would be, it would be in addition.
Don't go around other communities and do that either.
It would be in addition.
They may be happy, the problem, you may be the problem, you know what I mean?
I'm trying.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think that's clear. And then also, if we kind of go down to the very bottom, Connor and I had brainstormed some incentives. They're pretty basic, here, let me just share my screen again.
Where are we?
Just fifty-three point nine. I'm curious on your thoughts about these proposed incentives. So it would just be a fifteen percent, up to fifteen percent reduction in parking, onsite parking. And that would kind of be like an optional thing to throw in there. And then, just at the discretion of the planning board, could work with the developer to further reduce minimum parking requirements or other dimensional relief. But nothing like kind of guaranteed in here, just saying.
What size project, though? Well, the requirement would be.
If they meet all the requirements, yeah.
Yeah, if, this would apply to any, any five-plus multifamily development that meets the affordability requirements.
Fifteen percent reduction, huh?
I'm just curious.
Why?
Connor, why?
Yeah, why?
Do we want to keep cutting the parking? We don't, we really don't want to be Worcester, okay? We do not want cars parked on the side of the road. Especially in the wintertime when it comes to plowing and all that, it's a nightmare. And if we keep pulling back these parking requirements, we're gonna end up with that. I think we've already looked at some of our parking and kind of scaled it back a little bit, and now you're scaling it back here again. Why?
Well, I guess we haven't made any changes to our parking requirements in a very long time, but a lot of inclusionary zoning bylaws do offer some kind of incentive or relief kind of in exchange for the affordable units or the cash that they're providing for affordable units. So this was something that we had discussed, it's, you know, I had heard, I think we had heard the board's take on not wanting to provide too much relief, so we offered, we're suggesting fifteen percent, but if the board does not, doesn't like that number, we can change it.
I almost think it should be on like a case-by-case basis, depending on the size of the lot and.
Yeah, I just think by putting it in there, you're guaranteeing they're gonna look for fifteen percent reduction automatically.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
I think that should be like on a, depending on the size of the lot.
If there's restrictions or whatever.
You know, on a case-by-case.
Yeah, so through the chair, the way it's written, the first sentence provided the fifteen percent parking relief, the second sentence just kind of had a more general statement at the discretion of the planning board, further reduction of parking, minimum parking requirements or dimensional relief may be granted on a case-by-case basis. We could just leave it as that one sentence and.
Yeah, and get rid of the fifteen percent.
Yeah, I feel better about that.
Through the chair, Bruce? Yeah, go ahead, Fran.
Yeah, I'm with these guys on the parking. You know I'm a stickler on parking. And I don't want to give any incentive to reduce parking. We have parking, we have parking bylaws, I want to follow. And, you know, you know I fought this battle before and lost. But I don't like giving them an incentive. You know exactly, they'll come fifteen percent, without a doubt. That incentive thing, I would do away with it altogether.
So, thank you, Fran. So, so you guys are saying at the discretion of the planning board, further reduction of minimum parking requirements, or dimensional relief may be granted on a case-by-case basis? Is that what we're talking about? Instead of doing.
It would just be.
You're sleeping, babe.
Right.
Get rid of the first.
At least, at least the board will have the discretion
Yes.
of what to do there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, we can make that change.
Definitely.
Okay, so those.
Everybody's good with everything else?
Yeah. This is my bedtime shot.
Is that what that was?
Yeah, I gotta go to.
Does that mean you gotta go home? Oh, you gotta get up, one or the other. Okay, I make a motion to submit the language for the inclusionary zoning bylaw amendment for the fall special town meeting as outlined in the proposed draft with the corrections.
Or changes discussed.
Changes that we agreed on.
For, through the chair, for the options for fifteen or more units, for the percentage for fifteen to fourteen units, and for the incentive section fifty-three point nine, as discussed.
That's the motion.
Second.
Okay, I get a motion, it's been seconded. Tony?
Yes.
Fran?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yes.
Paul? And myself is a yes, that's unanimous.
Wow, you're gonna twofer.
This is a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And through the chair, I'm just gonna make maybe a suggestion, I don't see Ms. Dotson here tonight for water body protection. I think we still should cover that, but I do see Mr. Simler here, he's been waiting a while, maybe we could jump to three H for the discussion on off-site parking.
Uh, yes. Yeah, I'm good with that. That would be Bob, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hey, I'm gonna give you something, because I'm gonna ask a question on this. Redhams. The front page you already got, the back page you did, well, you did.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, three weeks ago? I'm sorry. Bob Simler, Eight Grove Street. Three weeks ago, I walked around the center and went to probably thirteen, fourteen of the businesses around there, talking to them about this. Not one was happy. One got actually upset. But here's my thing. I'm gonna read it so that the public knows, bylaw three, three point one allows remote parking up to two-hundred feet away. How does this bylaw benefit the town? It doesn't, it only benefits the investors. Tenants of these new buildings that are gonna be put up or redone, they're not gonna walk two-hundred-and-fifty feet away to remote parking. When there's a municipal parking lot or a public street parking right outside their door, that's what they're gonna take, and it's gonna take more of the parking away from the businesses. Businesses are gonna fail. I was told that the police department would take care of the issues with the parking in the municipal parking lot and on the streets. They got enough to do without doing this. What are we gonna put up, meters or something? More money. Let's not create a bad situation in the first place, no matter how you label it, mixed-use, B-one, whatever. Every dwelling needs onsite parking, there should be no exceptions, we're not Worcester. I'm gonna ask you for a definition on that three-three-one, on that red section. I'm gonna read it all the way down there, so people can understand it too. Three-three-one, general. Adequate off-street parking must be provided on paved surfaces to service all parking demands created by new construction, whether through new, new structures or additional, or additions to old ones, and by change of use of existing structures. Such parking shall be on the premises as the activity it services. Now, in the red, this is where I want it explained, a definition of it. It says, or within five, or within two-hundred-and-fifty feet on a separate parcel, which may be used jointly with other premises for this purpose. That right there tells me that I can tear my house down at Nine Grove Street, put up a block of apartments, and I don't need parking. Because I can use the municipal lot. That's what that.
Through the chair, I would, just to jump in, that you would still need to construct the parking.
It says right here, or within five, or within two-hundred-and-fifty feet on a separate parcel, which may be jointly used with other premises for this purpose. In the center, nobody has any parking.
Bruce, can I jump in here for one second?
Yep.
Yeah, the five hundred, it used to be five hundred feet.
Right, we changed it to two-fifty, I wanted to get.
And I said nobody was gonna walk five hundred feet.
Right, and you changed it to two-fifty, I wanted it to zero.
We changed it to two-fifty to cut it in half at the time, to make it a little more reasonable. But I agree with you, people are not gonna, they're gonna park right next to the door if they can.
Right.
They'll park in the door if they can.
In the way that I read that in the red, on a separate parcel, which may be used jointly with other premises, like other, one-eighteen, you know, they use the parking lot, so.
But I, yeah.
Are they talking about the parking lot right here?
No.
What are they talking about?
They're, they're saying you, you still would need to provide the required.
It doesn't say that.
It does, yeah. It just, it doesn't need to be on the same parcel. So you, even if you were to construct one-eighteen, what's, is that the grass lot?
Uh, no, one-eighteen is the barber shop. They use the lot too.
Okay, maybe it's one-twelve is the grass lot.
Right.
They would. Um, they would still, even if they did offsite parking, they would still need to construct it, or it would need to exist on a separate parcel somewhere within 500 feet.
Nobody's gonna walk. In the parking lot. Who's gonna, who's gonna police that, the police?
Yeah, you're, you're probably right, but...
I am our police, put up meters. You know, it doesn't make sense. Why are we doing this?
Through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
My suggestion, Connor, would be just to, uh, say you have to have parking onsite.
Yeah, through, through the chair, and I, um...
Period.
I, I think that's what Mr. Simler is suggesting, and I, I don't necessarily see an issue with that, I think, you know, we've had this bylaw in place since 1978, and I don't think anyone's taken advantage of offsite parking.
Yeah, no, because they need to own two separate lots.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a very likely scenario.
And it doesn't have to be deeded either. Handshake.
So this would have to wait till spring?
It would.
But it's something we can do, though, right?
It is.
Okay.
I think if we got rid of that, what's highlighted in red would solve the problem.
No, just get rid of it, period. Have to have onsite parking.
Right, right.
Period.
Well, that's what all that black does, but in the red it's saying, well,
Yeah.
you can, uh...
You can also do...
Right.
Yeah, no, you can't. But, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Bob. All right, let's see. We have to touch base on this, uh, this, uh, bylaw from Terry now, right?
Yes, through the chair, um, I don't believe Terry was able to join tonight, uh, but just to summarize or I guess recap, um, the, the board was presented with a proposed bylaw amendment from Ms. Dotson at your meeting on June, uh, August 11th. And the board did vote to submit a placeholder warrant article, um, subject to, I, you know, doing some follow-up research or analysis on the proposal. Um, I did put together a memo, uh, for the board. Additionally, town council reviewed it, um, and I think the, the big takeaway from town council was that they did find that this would be considered a repetitive petition from the, um, zoning bylaw amendment in the spring that was negatively recommended by the planning board and then voted down at town meeting. So if that were the case, uh, this wouldn't, a substantially similar zoning bylaw amendment wouldn't be able to come back for two years. So that would include what was presented at the last meeting. Uh, additionally, in my memo, I outlined, uh, some of the other, um, kind of comments I had on it, uh, pretty similar to the ones from the spring, uh, that normally this type of bylaw is handled through a local conservation bylaw, that it would create a number of non-conforming parcels, um, it would affect, uh, I think, where is it?
850 properties and 550 acres of land.
Yes, um, and it would, there, it doesn't provide any provisions for granting waivers or deviations. So it would require a var, a variance from the Board of Appeals, which then makes the, um, building inspector the enforcement officer for this, which typically, again, this is something that, um, you would have a conservation agent do as part of a local conservation bylaw. Um, so those are kind of some of the concerns that popped up, but, um, again, I think the main one being the, uh, town councils, um, finding a recommendation that this is a repetitive petition from the spring town meeting.
The one that, uh, the one that, also, I told Terry that I was gonna talk to conservation about it, and, uh, she told me, please, by all means do, because she said they agreed with what she had.
No, they didn't.
And they did not.
They did not.
They did not agree with that. So, um, all that being said, we, we do have to remove that from the warrant articles.
So I make a motion to withdraw the zoning bylaw amendment for section 35.21.
Second.
A motion that's been seconded. Tony?
I'm a yes.
Fran? Are we losing? He was just there.
He's gone.
Okay, Rich?
No, I, I, um, I'm gonna say no.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, uh...
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, Fran.
401.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
That's 401.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on this map that you got here.
Sure.
And the, the, the thing that's, you know, originally, the wording was from Terry to, uh, for perennial rivers, interim streams, creeks, brooks, ponds, and I looked at this thing, and you're gonna have to add a whole lot more to it.
Yeah, yeah, so that, the, the map that you're holding up is a, a map that I had CMRPC put together.
Yeah, yeah, but it isn't even, you know, it, it, it's not even close to the amount of land that this would, uh, impact.
Yep, and that's only showing, uh, the 2005 GIS layer for estimated wetlands, it does not include perennial rivers or lakes, which are already included in the bylaw. But, yeah, it was just more of an estimation to kind of get a sense of the, the impact this would have.
Okay. Well, I think we should do something with the bylaw, but I don't know whether I want to go quite that.
Wait, you sound like, you sound like you voted wrong.
I voted no.
You voted against taking it off the table? Okay.
For town meeting.
Excuse, through the chair, Bruce?
Yeah.
I voted wrong, I wanted to vote no on that if I made.
Okay.
I didn't want to remove it off the warrant. I thought we could change it as the, as the town, as council had said, that we could make some changes to it to make it work for the fall meeting. If I read his memo correctly.
Okay, so you're a, you're a no?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm a no.
So it's three, three to two.
Still passes.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, so, let's go to the definition of a driveway. Getting tired.
I thought we weren't gonna discuss it tonight.
Where is it? There it is.
Bless you.
So we have here a memorandum, um, you want me to read it or...
Uh, yeah, through, through the chair, I guess, just a, a note on the Braymanville and definition of a driveway. I, I haven't updated or provided any new materials on those two, um, through a conversation with the chair. And correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think you would just kind of wanted to keep these on the agenda to keep them front of mind. But at this point, they won't be going on the fall town meeting, uh, if the board wants to continue to discuss options for what?
Oh, okay, so we can table this?
It's up to the board, but, uh, yeah.
Because we can't put it on our warrant anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, are you okay with that, Rich?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, Braymanville, I'd like to be able to table, table that as well, if we could, please. And we did the offsite parking, and we have some minutes to approve.
A motion to approve the minutes of August 11th, 2025.
Second.
A motion's been seconded for the minutes of August 11th, 2025, Tony?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Rich?
Yep.
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous?
Motion to approve the minutes of August 25th, 2025.
Second.
A motion that's been seconded for August 25th of 2025 minutes, uh, Tony?
I'm a yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Rich?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes. And that's unanimous again. Uh, any, uh, mail or staff updates?
Just wanted to float out to the board members if you have any issues with your iPads, or I just wanted to maybe do a, a check on those. You can let myself from Reno, if they're working, or if you need any help connecting, um, but just wanted to touch base with you on those.
You know, I had, I had to spend some time with IT to get mine squared away.
Yeah, we can get in connected with, with Worldband if you have any issues. I also wanted to gauge the board's availability for a special meeting on October 6th, we have a, uh, Columbus Day falls on October 13th, which would normally be our first meeting in October. If we had the meeting on October 6th, we would be able to do the public hearings for, uh, ADUs and inclusionary zoning on that night, which gives us almost a full month ahead of the town meeting, and it gives us a second meeting in October on the, uh, 20, 20th, um, so just want...
Those be the only things on the agenda?
Yeah, unless the board would be okay discussing Old Common Road, if, if it happens to be. I, I don't know where we'll be at with Old Common Road.
Well, we changed, we already continue to, the 22nd, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, um...
I think we should just have it, those two items.
Just those two items, I agree. And that's just, uh, to have the public hearing, so it can go to select board?
Um, no, the, you guys have already, uh, voted to submit it to the town meeting warrant, and, uh, I think we, we voted, you guys voted on the language tonight.
Okay.
Um, so now it's just a public hearing where you guys will take public comment and then make a recommendation that will be provided to the, provided at town meeting.
So that gives us time to edit if we have to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which I kind of like, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Tony, you good with that?
Um, yeah, the only thing, yep, the only thing is, um, I, I might be 15, I might need 15 minutes that day, maybe 7:15. I mean, you guys are okay.
And I, and I, I can, I don't need, me to put you on the spot tonight, I can confirm with you guys all offline, um, on your availability too.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Uh, I got a motion that's been seconded.
Wow.
Is he sleeping?
Was that quick, Fran, or what?
Wow.
I think Fran's sleeping.
That was quicker than Paul even did it.
I thought you were dreaming, Fran.
Oh, I'm in la-la way, believe me.
Okay, okay, uh, your motion's been seconded, Tony?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Rich?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.